A special meeting of October 20th, 2021. Notice of the time, date, location, and agenda of this meeting to extend then known was provided at least 48 hours prior to commencement of this meeting in the following manner pursuant to provisions of Chapter 231 of law of 1975, also known as the Old Public Meeting Act. One, by posting such notice on the bulletin board of the municipal building, and two, by melon says notices to the office of the independent press, Bluefield, Maricopa, and the Star Ledger. Due to the ongoing pandemic and the effort to prevent further spread COVID-19, this meeting will be held remotely. Public is invited to attend by telephone or video link and be viewed on Comcast or Verizon, and it's streaming live on Facebook on the township's website. The public is invited to participate via Zoom by accessing the website link or by calling the telephone number. Hello, the meeting ID is 874-9658-7356, passcode 296767. If you'd like to review the material, please contact the board's secretary Nicole Casenza at 973-680-4012. Please call the board.
Okay. Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Mr. Balnicki?
Present.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Ms. Nazarian?
Here.
Ms. Hilaire?
Here.
Chairman Machowski?
Here.
Okay. Also present is the board's attorney, Mike Rubin, the board's engineer, Anthony Marucci, and the board's planner, Stephen Martini.
As far as resolutions and minutes, we have no minutes. We do have a resolution board. This resolution has been submitted to you in great form in an advancing meeting for review. The resolution is the resolution matter of the application of Charles Housing LLC for a use variance pursuant to NJSA 40:55D -7D D1, a floor area ratio variance pursuant to NJSA 40:55D -7D D4 variances pursuant to NJSA 40.55D -7D C for entroachment into the required front side yard setbacks for excessive building coverage and lot coverage and existing nonconforming lot area lot width and rear yard setback deviations to meet the conversion of a one-family dwelling into a two-family dwelling okay that 33-37, now the block 10 212, board, any discussion and comments regarding this resolution? Any from board? Hearing no one, may I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
All right, Mr. Johnson moves. Is there a second?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Balnicki, seconds.
Okay.
Please call the board and remember, this is a resolution against vote denies the application.
Okay. Mr. Balnicki?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Nazarian?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Chairman Machowski?
Yes. Resolution carries, resolution is approved, the application. The next item on the agenda is applications to consider for review by the board's planning expert, the board's traffic expert. There are no such resolutions to consider this evening. Looking at the item four under old business item four A is the application of how Marison and Anne Coratel as applicants and owners for a use variance and any such other relief is maybe required considering the Lord Township Bluefield construction and addition and alterations of the residential one-family R1A, they're known on the is known as map 42, block 11, 86, lot 12, better known as, and I believe there's counsel for the applicant here tonight, Mr. Wilson.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. Brian Wilson here from O'Toole's, good to go on behalf of the applicants.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, so tonight we have a brief application for you. We're going to be seeking a few variances, flexible Cs, D4 for floor area ratio. We have two witnesses tonight. We have Sergio Chavaria, our architect, and we have Christine Coefon who will be serving as our planner, providing the planning testimony.
Okay.
If it pleases the board and Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call our first witness, Sergio Chavar.
Okay, Mr. Chavar, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you just state your name for the record?
My name is Sergio J. Chavaria.
Chavaria.
I'm an architect, I've since stayed in New Jersey since 2003, graduated NJAT in 1991, a bachelor of architecture.
Okay.
Madam Secretary, do I have permission to share a PDF on my screen?
I'm sure, but the board just has to qualify him, they have to agree to qualify him as an architect.
Apologist.
That's okay. I don't know if the chairman said it and he just froze, or if he's...
Please provide the professional licenses and educational background for the witness.
Okay.
Sergio, go ahead.
I own the license, actually nine of nine different states, I own the license in New Jersey since 2003, the license number is AI 1612.
You have educational background, sir?
I graduated from New Jersey Institute of Technology, 1991, a bachelor of architecture.
And you're currently licensed and your license is current, is that correct?
My license is current and interesting.
And have you piqued four other boards in New Jersey planning boards?
Yes, I have.
Could you give us an estimate of how many?
About six or seven.
Thank you.
Maybe one or two other boards.
Any discussion? Any discussion? We'll accept the gentleman as an expert in architecture.
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you very much. I'm going to just share a screen right now, which is the, please let me know if the board can see if this is the architectural plans.
Yes, is this what was handed in?
That's correct.
All right, we're going to mark it, we're going to mark whatever whole set you have here as A1, but if this is what I have, you don't have to send it to me.
Okay, great. So I'm going to just enlarge the screen a little bit here and make it easier for everyone to see.
I believe this is sheet A1, correct? Of the two sheets that were submitted, there was sheet TM1 and sheet A1, this is sheet A1, correct?
That's correct. Sheet TM1 just shows the 200-foot list as well as the proposed variances that we are seeking in grid.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you. Mr. Chavaria, could you please explain to the board the proposed architectural plans and the proposed construction at the 10 Alden Terrace site?
Sure, be happy to. So the existing structure is a two-and-a-half story wood-framed, simple attached house, three-bedroom dwelling. It is currently uses a three-bedroom house. The renovations are on the first floor, second floor, with primarily the main additions to the rear of the structure above the existing single car garage. The second floor is basically going to expand the rear bedroom and include a new master ensuite with a bathroom and bring out the water from the lower level. On the first floor, we're basically expanding the existing kitchen, adding a half-bath, and where the existing single car garage at the rear structure, we're converting that into a new family room to off of the existing, or off to the proposed renovated kitchens.
Perfect. And for the board's clarification, the architectural plans that you've prepared do not envision an expansion of the existing footprint of the single-family home, is that correct?
That's correct. The footprint remains the same, we're not expanding the building directly above the existing footprint.
And the addition of the second floor above the garage would not trigger any additional height variances, correct? It'd be bringing it in line with the rest of the roofline?
That is correct. In fact, the addition to rear does not meet the existing ridge, which is higher than the addition, so there is no increase in length.
And so from a building massing and viewpoint, you would not even be able to see this from the street, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Chavaria, if there are any other items that you'd like to draw the board's attention to with regard to the specifics of the plan, I offered you the opportunity to do so.
Yeah, I believe the garage in its present state is very difficult to maneuver, it's relatively undersized, the width and the depth are really not practical, and the manner you enter, would enter if you have a small vehicle, very difficult to maneuver within the existing driveway. So the applicant basically, you know, the discussion we had was very difficult for them to be continued to use it as a garage.
Understood. And pursuant to the Bloomfield zoning code, there are required two off-street parking spots, even with the proposed renovations, even though they're interior, you'd be able to park two cars in the driveway off the street, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I have nothing further for our architect, but if the board has any questions, we'd be happy to address them.
Who will be addressing the required variances?
Our planner, Mr. Kefon.
All right, that's fine. Board, questions for the architect, please. Does anyone have a question for the architect?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Rubin, I have one.
Go ahead, Mr. Rubin.
I just want to put this on record, took me a little while to figure it out. The second story is going to cantilever two feet, oh, the new second-story addition is going to cantilever two feet over the existing first floor on the side where the entrance to the first floor family room will be, correct?
That is correct.
Is that extra two feet included in your calculation of building coverage?
Yes, that would be included in the second floor area.
So when you say the footprint of the building hasn't really increased, this cantilever, this extra two feet that is going to extend over the existing ground floor is actually an increase of two feet in building coverage for the full depth of the addition, isn't that correct?
That is correct, and it's noted on the tabbed way to calculations on that same table.
All right, so I just want to make sure that that extra two feet is included in not just floor area ratio, but in building coverage?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Now, I have one other thing to point out. In your sheet TM1 in your bulk tables, in your existing floor area ratio, you exclude the existing garage. The existing garage should be included, even though it uses a garage, because attached garage is included in floor area ratio. So that means that if I calculated this correctly, your existing floor area ratio is 0.4827 rather than 0.4352. I just want to put that on the record. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Does the witness agree with Mr. Rubin's calculation?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Other questions, board, for the witness?
Mr. Chairman, I have one quick question.
Go.
The, I did understand your testimony regarding the driveway, the garage is not currently used. Does, so does that suggest that the driveway does not need to be expanded in any way? The drawing that I have in front of me shows the driveway, and that remains exactly as is, is that correct?
That remains exactly as is, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Is there any member of the public here has a question for the architect? Any member of the public here on Zoom?
No.
Can we drop the screen share?
Yeah, I'd be happy to do so once the witness is dismissed, absolutely, Mr. Rubin.
I don't see anybody's hands going up, so I would assume if somebody was, oh, there you go. No, nobody's here from the, from the public.
Board, any questions? All right, thank you, sir, thank you.
I just, this, can you hear Mr. Balnicki?
Yes.
Okay, I just lost my video.
Oh, well, we could see you and hear you.
Okay, I can't see you.
You're looking good, Mr. Balnicki.
I'll stay with you then.
All right, if it pleases the board, we'd like to call our second witness, Christine Kefon.
Sure, go ahead.
Ms. Kefon, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Just state your name for the record.
Certainly, it's Christine Nazzaro, N-A-Z-Z-A-R-O, Kefon, C-O-F as in Frank, O-N-E. This address is 125 Hack Mall Road, Suite 200, Red Bank, New Jersey, 07701.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You can qualify her, Mr. Wilson.
Mrs. Nazzaro, Kefon, could you please give us the benefit of your educational background and your experience as a planner in the state of New Jersey?
Yeah, certainly. Good evening, Chairman and members of the board, for the record, Christine Nazzaro Kefon. I'm a licensed professional planner, I've been practicing as such for 25 years in the state of New Jersey. As such, I have been qualified before over 420-something planning and zoning boards throughout the state of New Jersey, so clearly my practice is by and large representing applicants before boards. My firm does not do opposition work. I am also an appointed affordable housing special master in about 30 different municipalities. I teach planning and zoning courses for the workers who answer for government services, and I do some municipal work as well, and that where the appointed planner for the Casino redevelopment authority in Atlantic City and a few other municipalities, but largely I'm an applicant's witness offering testimony on variances.
Your license current, New Jersey?
It is, yeah, and valid, all my CLDs are up to speed, yeah.
That's, that's good news.
It is, good news.
Questions, board, any discussion?
I don't want to sit for that AICP exam again, so I keep that card and not want to take that exam. I don't think I could pass.
We'll accept the gentlewoman as an expert in the planning, excuse me, planning.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. This is Nazzaro Kefon, could you please briefly describe the current zoning for 10 Alden Terrace and the location of the property in the township of Bloomfield?
Yes, good evening. So the property is located in the township R1A zone, and we are here, the single families are in districts, we are a single-family home, we are seeking de-variance relief for the excess FAR. So unlike other applications where you hear a particular suitability and enhanced proof, on a de-variance, we don't have to demonstrate that, a de-variance for FAR, I should say, we don't have that burden of proof, what we have to demonstrate is that the site can handle the excess FAR in accordance with the prevailing case law. So the architect presented testimony, and I believe your professionals, Mr. Martucci, issued a letter due September 1st of 2021 this year indicating that there would not be an increase over the existing footprint and essentially the structure, the addition would not have any impact on any of the bulk criteria, meaning if there were existing nonconformities or setbacks, those would exist on the property and they really wouldn't be impacted one way or the other. So I think the board can certainly look at that and consider that in evaluating this application. The other variance that we're seeking is, we need a C variance, because I believe the way the code is written here in blue field is that you have to have two off-street parking spaces, one of which has to be in the garage. So even though we have two off-street parking spaces, because of the, what we're proposing to do with the dwelling, the alteration to the dwelling, we're not going to be able to have one in the garage, even though, as you've heard from the testimony from our architect, it's not really a particularly usable space right now for this young couple. So with that being said, I think the board can certainly, under the Randall Town Center case, I think the board can consider the fact that there is no increase in the footprint, essentially, that there is no exacerbation of any of the existing setbacks, that essentially we are proposing visually from the street, you're not going to have a substantial change in how the street looks. Alden Terrace is a charming street, the homes all line up at fairly the same setbacks along the street line, so you're not going to have any impacts on that, you'll continue to have that condition if the board were to move favorably on this application. So I think this is clearly a situation where the site can handle the excess FAR while we are not providing the parking space in the garage, I believe with the provision of the two off-street parking spaces, we are reading the intent of the ordinance. I believe that Mr. Rubin correctly points out that FAR existing is 0.4827, where we're proposing 0.5372. So we are asking for an increase in that variance, in the de-variance for floor area ratio, which gives this board jurisdiction. So I think some of the other important considerations that we look at is, you know, the positive criteria, I think the board can look at criteria G, sufficient space and appropriate locations for, I think there is sufficient space here, we're not exacerbating any of the other criteria in the R1A zone. I also think that the board can consider criteria I, which talks about a desirable visual environment. I think that the proposal is consistent with other homes and maintains the look and feel of other homes existing on Alden Terrace. Also importantly, I think as it relates to the master plan, walls and objectives in the Bloomfield master plan include preserving and enhancing the suburban residential character of the township by protecting established neighborhoods, maintaining a balance of housing choices, and providing for compatible indoor housing and planning for appropriate residential development in targeted areas. So I think that we're certainly, this is an appropriate residential area, and I think this application certainly preserves the character and integrity of the housing along Alden Terrace. So I see no substantial detriment, land use law does not ask you to hold us or any applicant to the standard that there be no detriment, just the benefits of the brand of variance outweigh any detriment. And here I think you have a site that can clearly support the addition, is consistent with the fabric and setback of the dwellings on Alden Terrace, and that won't be impacted. So I think when you distill down the de-variance for the FAR, which is a D4 variance, again, we don't have to establish particular suitability or those other type of proofs on this, I think the board can certainly come to the conclusion that the site can handle the excess FAR with no substantial detriment to the public good or the R1A zone plan of the township of Bloomfield.
And just for the record, those were the first and second prongs of the negative criteria examination, is that correct, Mrs. Nazzaro?
Yes, exactly. So we substantiate our, I think statutorily this application satisfies all of our burden of proof. The two positive criteria are G and I, sufficient space and appropriate locations, and I is a desirable visual environment. And, you know, we've added all those off, G and I, those are the letters of the 40:55D-2 of the municipal land use law, they're not going to Bloomfield, they're not my crafty planning language, they come right out of the land use law statute, and that's the satisfaction. Statutorily, we only have to advance one or more of them, but I think that those two are really appropriate to this application. And then, of course, independent of that, we do have the negative criteria, both prongs, the impact on the public good, which we talked about as far as not being, changing the curb scale from the street radically, and certainly being able to provide the off-street parking, and then certainly we're not changing the bulk, bulk criteria really, or intensity or fabric of this property substantiated by this application.
Wonderful. Thank, thank you very much. I have nothing further for our expert planner, and I, any comments or questions from the board, we'd be happy to address.
Board, questions, please.
Mr. Chairman, I just recognized another variance that I'm going to ask Ms. Kefon to address very briefly. Excuse me. The side yard setback is 2.45 feet, and that's the northerly side yard setback, and you are increasing the height of that setback by adding that second floor. So there is a side yard setback variance necessary, at least under the way we have always interpreted, correct? Anthony, now?
No, Mike, if you look at the southeast elevation, that second floor addition is being indented to six foot side yard. That's why they're having the overhang.
I got it. Excuse me. Drive by, I apologize.
That's, that's why they're having the overhang on the other side.
I'm going now, one side, don't miss the other. Sorry, Ms. Kefon, I apologize.
Okay.
Okay.
We wouldn't have been able to address it, though.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin, and thank you, Mr. Marucci. I apologize, Mr. Chairman.
Board, questions for the planner, please. Any questions, board? Mr. Martini, do you have any questions for the planner?
Yes, I have, I do have one quick question for Ms. Kefon. In evaluating the excess FAR, did you take a look at or calculate neighboring properties, see what their FARs were, to see if they feel comparable, if they were under the requirement in their existing condition, or if it was out of context to what the, what they are along Alden Terrace?
We didn't calculate that because it's very difficult to get that information, you have to utilize the tax maps and/or the tax records, and sometimes they have a tendency to not be so accurate. So we focused really more on this particular piece of property and the fact that we weren't exacerbating any of the setbacks, that we were still able to provide the parking, you know, understanding that each case has to rise and fall on its own merits, I focused more on, you know, Alden Terrace and the fact that to me it seems that those structures all line up quite neatly and tidy, and that we weren't impacting that rhythm, which seems to be an important focus of that street, it's really a charming street. So I didn't do that calculation only because I didn't really feel like I had the raw data to put into that to make it a really viable and accurate analysis without having surveys or architectural plans for those homes, I wasn't sure that what I could bring to the board would have been really accurate.
Okay, understood, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, board?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Yes, on the last page of our planner's report, planning comments, item number two, these applicants shall confirm that a survey was submitted with a date and comply with the checklist, is that done? Because the survey that I have, a date on.
I believe that a, I believe that a survey was submitted, but I can, I can commit that if a survey, I believe a survey was submitted by Casey and Keller Incorporated, but if, if that submission is not present in the board, we'd be happy to provide that, and if that is accepted, we'd be happy to do a new one in the week, that is a condition.
Yeah, I was just looking for a date on, there was no date. I have the Casey and Keller one.
Oh, I apologize, I don't, I assume this was the, I can't testify for the owners, but I believe that this is the survey that was done when they purchased the home very recently.
And the...
I have a date on mine, date 2/16/21.
Okay. Far be it for me to...
I don't know, maybe it was the copy...
Do you agree with the tech or tech?
I'll tell you what, the date is at the very bottom, maybe your copy cut it off or something to that effect, I'm not sure.
Okay.
All right, but it's the, it's...
Long as there was one submitted, it's just that, you know, it was brought up in the planning comments.
Yes. The survey is from Michael Lonzo Fama, and it's dated February 16th, 2021.
And also, there was a comment here where planner's report said, number four applicant shall provide testimony regarding current status of the proposed renovation. Has the second floor addition been completed?
No, it has not.
Did it?
I believe, I believe that for Mr. Balnicki's clarification, I believe that there is some fittings that had been affixed on top of the garage, but no actual physical construction has taken place yet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just thinking, Mr. Rubin.
I passed by the, the site today, and it looked like, I don't think they were doing anything, construction per se, but it looked like they were redoing the siding at this point, would you know if that's correct, that they're...
I know that they're undertaking a significant amount of both exterior and interior renovations, this is, that's for sure, the board's, was the newly married couple... As I'm sure the board knows, the newly married couple, they're currently on their honeymoon. They are... You know, this is their quote-unquote dream house, and they are spending significant time and money to, you know, modernize the home. And given the work-from-home environment and spending a lot of time in the home, and so that was the genesis for those improvements. And Mr. Martini, if you would like, I can try and call them and confirm that.
That's okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Another question, board?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Yes, Ms. Cofon. One of the benefits, I think, that you had indicated in your testimony was that the lot or the... Yeah, the lot size was quite spacious or generous. What is that lot size? Is it 40 feet wide? Is that what I'm seeing on the drawing?
I don't have this survey in front of me. If you want to pull that out, Mr. Wilson. I don't have the exhibits electronically in front of me.
I can confirm it is 40 feet based on that survey.
Thank you.
All right. And then the other question that I have is that on the second floor addition in the rear there, I think if I'm looking at the drawing correctly, it looks like there might be windows on three sides, on basically the three sides that face the exterior of the house. And so on the windows that would be on the north side, which is the setback closest to the neighbor on the north side, I'm just wondering, do we know what those... What the windows would look down on in terms of the neighbor's property? Because it looks like the neighboring property is very close there, and I just want to see it to make sure that, you know, we're not invading any... There's no privacy issues.
Well, as we are not increasing the setback, I don't think that we are invading their privacy issues. And we've certainly noticed all of our neighbors in conjunction with this application, so they've received a notice about the application. I believe, you know, if they were concerned, I'm sure that they would have made their appearance known. I don't know if Mr. Wilson has had any contact directly with those neighbors, but they certainly were noticed to be here tonight. And I think that, like I said, one of the things that I thought was important is that this structure, to me, really seems to fit in with the character and the fabric and the prevailing setbacks along Alden Terrace, and it doesn't change that. So I don't have a concern that we are impacting the light area and open spaces' privacy to the neighbors, given that fact.
And I can confirm, Mr. Johnson, that I did speak with the owners of 12 Alden Terrace. I did inform them of this special hearing, and their only concern, which I can state on the record, was that they wanted to make sure that a home business was not being operated out of the dwelling.
Correct.
And I confirmed, and I will stipulate in the record, no home business, no commercial activity other than, you know, potential pandemic or from-home issues. But they're not operating a business. I believe Mr. Hummerman works for an investment bank, and so, you know, once he returns to the office, that would not be a concern.
And 12 Alden, is that is the neighbor immediately to the north? Is that correct?
I believe so, sir.
Okay, all right. Yeah, because my concern, even though we're not expanding the footprint, the fact that we're adding a second floor that would view out across the neighbor's yard, that was my concern. So, yeah, I guess you addressed that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Is there any member of the public who has a question for this question? No, hearing no one? Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing further. Those conclude my witnesses. But just to... A quick summary, brief 30 seconds. I believe based on the actual...
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
I apologize.
We're going to hear from the board's engineer, the board's planner, and then any member of the public who wishes to speak. And after that, you'll have the opportunity to summarize.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman.
No problem, no problem. Mr. Merge, please raise your right hand and be sworn in.
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Just state your name for the record.
Anthony Merge.
Thank you, Anthony.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have my report dated September 1st, 2021. This application, in a sense, quite simple with respect to the lot size. It only has a 40-foot frontage, which is the same frontage along the street. And with a side entry garage, it makes it very difficult to maneuver cars in and out of the garage. The R1A Zone actually requires a 50-foot frontage, so that's what makes these driveways very difficult to maneuver into the garage. And the board has entertained a number of applications of this type with respect to the garage. And so I can understand the removal of the garage and converting that into living space. With respect to the second floor, as I stated before, when Mr. Ruben asked the question, they're actually favoring their neighbors to the north because they're setting it back at six feet. They're providing... In other words, when Mr. Johnson asked the question, they're actually going to overlook their own roof on the first floor, so they're not going to be overlooking their neighbor's property. And as I said in my report, the footprint stays the same, so there is no change in drainage or runoff. And so from an engineering perspective, I have no problem with the application. It's a planning issue with respect to the FAR.
Thank you. Mr. Merge, board, questions for Mr. Merge, please? Anyone? Does anyone have a question for Mr. Merge? Does any member of the public have a question for Mr. Merge?
Nope.
Hearing no one? Thank you, Mr. Merge.
Well.
Mr. Martini, raise his right hand and be sworn in, please.
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Just state your name for the record.
Steven Martini, M-A-R-T-I-N-I.
Thank you, Mr. Martini.
Mr. Martini, if you could give us the benefit of your analysis and report, please?
Sure. So our report is dated September 29th of this year. A lot of things have been said already about... I'll reiterate very briefly. The existing conditions of the site include... Systems are a little... A two-and-a-half-story single-family dwelling and attached garage. And then the project involves the conversion of the existing garage in the first floor to living space, specifically as a family room, and a second floor addition that will be a master bedroom. The expansion and conversion results in a net increase of 408 square feet to the building in addition to the existing 7,200 and 40 square feet. And we're looking at two variances. One is the D4 FAR variance that the maximum allowed is .5, whereas the applicant is asking for FAR of .535. And then the other variance at hand is the parking variance that once we should be housing the garage in addition to one off-street space. And the applicant is going to continue to allow for two off-street spaces, just one not in the garage, as we mentioned, that's going to be utilized for the dwelling. In terms of consistency with the master plan, there is an excerpt out of care briefly. Quote, "In order to preserve the integrity of the district," this is regarding single-family residential districts, "the intensity of future development scale and appearance of new housing intrusive of non-residential uses and conversions to multifamily must be carefully controlled." In this case, it's my professional planning opinion that the applicant is not substantially altering the physical character of Alden Terrace through this expansion, especially because of the fact that the addition is going to be at the rear of the existing dwelling and is away from street view from past fires, pedestrians, and vehicles. Couple other comments regarding the off-street parking spaces. As I mentioned, two will continue to be provided because of the fact that the one cannot be housed within the garage, but they will continue to maintain the two spaces for parking. And I concur that the planner did provide the positive and negative criteria. Even though this is not the one experience, she still mentioned that, as I concur as well, that it will not alter the existing fabric of Alden Terrace and the master plan and the intent of the master planning and zoning warrants will not be substantially affected by the project. And I believe that will conclude my comments and testimony for the project.
Thank you, Mr. Martini. Board, questions for Mr. Martini, please? Is there any member of the public who has a question for Mr. Martini?
No.
Hearing no one? Thank you, Mr. Martini.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any member of the public who wishes to be sworn in to provide testimony regarding this application? Hearing no one? Counselor, you now... Wilson to some, or I?
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. I appreciate the professionals and the board's questions, all very thoughtful. And I just want to say that I believe that based on the testimony of our architect and our planner, we've established the positive and negative criteria necessary to support the variance that we're requesting tonight. And I thank the board for their time and attention and to all the professionals to this matter. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Board, the time for public hearing is closed. The time for discussion has begun. Who would like to lead the discussion?
I can lead off, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wagner.
I think I'm in favor for this application. I think there was strong evidence that there was... That there is no detriment, you know, based on the positive and negative criteria. Also, in terms of the FAR, it's not... You know, it's a smaller lot. It's not the 50-foot-wide lot, the normal lots. The driveway's a bit awkward. So I think the use case and the use variance is valid as well as the FAR. So I don't... I think I would... Based on the merit that's been presented here today, I don't think that there's any reason to not approve this application.
You see, everybody's internet. There's something...
Thank you, sir.
I don't know what to...
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I would agree with my colleague. I would also state that there is nothing in the proposed addition that would change the character of the street or the character of the house, for that matter. Basically, they're converting a garage, a relatively non-functional garage into living space, which should add value to the house. So I would favor this application.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Is there anyone else? Hearing no one? I will entertain a motion now.
I make the motion that we approve this application as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Valnicky. Mr. Valnicky, move this. Is there a second? And Mr. Wagner has seconded it. Please hold board.
Okay.
Hold board, Mr. Johnson.
Okay. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. Valnicky?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Ms. Nazarian?
Yes.
Ms. Hilaire?
Yes.
Chairman Machowski?
Yes. Motion carries. The application is approved.
Yay!
We just want to thank the board for their time. I really appreciate it, and I'll let the homeowners know. So thank you very much.
I'm glad this is off the agenda.
Happy to help them. Thank you all very much.
All right, you're ready? You're welcome. Is there any of the business team in board?
No.
Anyone?
Nope.
Hearing no one? May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson moves it. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Prince seconds. All favor, please say aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed?
No.
Is there anyone opposed? That chance, anyone opposed?
Nope.
Hearing no one? Hearing no one, we are adjourned.
Yay!
Have a good night.
Have a good night, everybody. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
You're welcome. Good night.